Good evening, welcome to the school committee meeting on Monday, September 28th. The hour being six o'clock, open and meeting order, the precursor pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGL, chapter 30A subsection 18, and the governor's order concerning imposition on strict limitations on a number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in town of ours will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link or number to call in or other similar option. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible. No person in attendance with members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access to proceedings. For individuals who wish to participate remotely, please dial 1-646-558-8656 and PIN 944-9462-4747 or join Zoom meeting at zoom.us backslash I 944-9462-4747. That will announce it all, that we have all members present this evening. And we'll start with our consent agenda, the minutes from the September 14th meeting. If you had any chance to review them, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the September 14th meeting.
I'm making the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I shall abstain, let the director show four in affirmative, minutes passed. Then we have executive session minutes from August 24th. Let's look on my back here. They're all in the same packet. And 14th, 24th, let me just check to make sure if they can take them bulk. No, we cannot take them bulk. I think them all separately, being executive session. Intend a motion to approve the minutes, July 5th, 2020.
Make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Record show five in affirmative, minutes passed. August 24th, 2020, intend a motion to approve the minutes.
Make the motion.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
September 14th, intend a motion to approve the minutes September 14th.
Make the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And I shall abstain, four in affirmative, one abstention.
The chair, we have the 20th.
July 20th.
July 20th, did I miss July 20th?
Executive.
Contain a motion to approve the minutes of July 20th, executive session.
Make the motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Meeting done, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Record show five in affirmative, minutes are all passed. Tonight, in terms of correspondence, we did get a nice car from retired town clerk Lori Kelly. Thank you all so much for inviting me to attend your meeting. Certificate and gift were very thoughtful and unexpected. It's been a pleasure to know each of you. Can't thank you enough, wishing you all the best, Lori Kelly. Thank you Lori, enjoy your retirement.
Good.
Subcommittees, anything from subcommittees? No. Okay, district principals, school opening, orientation days, building reports, Dr. National, turn it to you.
Yes, I guess principals this evening can give you brief update, albeit on the two days that we used the 15th, 16th, 17th, excuse me, Wednesday and Thursday for our hybrid days before we went into remote. So they're here this evening to just give you a sense of what those days look like, any of the challenges, what we might have done since that time as we plan hopefully to move into a hybrid on October 5th. But you don't know who's up first.
We can start elementary to high school, which way you want to go. Okay. Principals Palczarski and Principals Quinn are first, up to back.
Good evening. To cover the two days for Chafee, I just, you know, the two basic, they were, they were the hybrid A and hybrid B, cohort A and B. You couldn't ask for a smoother beginning, but you have to take into account the fact that kindergarten didn't have true orientation because we were doing screenings. So I only had it one day, 46 children in Chafee. So it was kind of, I can't, I can't take credit for a smooth day. We had, I think, six kids took buses, it was real low ridership. But as far as health and safety went, it was really nice to, to practice some of the routines and get in there and make sure we had a lot of the things for two days prepared for. I don't think we learned too much from the two days. I think we'll learn a little bit more as all the kindergartens, first grade, and the two preschool classes are in. It was exciting today. We had two full preschool classes in both sessions A and B this morning and this afternoon. And then we had some of our ILC students in, so it was, it was really nice to finally have, you know, human interaction. I can't say enough about the way, and I know, I know Kadian's on the way, but we, as a district, should be very proud, I think, of our technology and the way we set ourselves up for success going forward. I just, you know, I, I can't imagine how tired the children and the, the parents and the teachers are at the end of each day because they are doing amazing. And the, we, I did a quick survey and I got some unbelievable, I got 112 responses from parents, just asking for feedback on what we're doing right, what we're doing wrong. For the most part, there, a lot of parents are split right in the middle from my school about too much screen time and just enough screen time. So, you know, that's a concern, but I'm going to echo that to my, I shared this with all my staff and my, and the superintendent's office. I just wanted people to know that that's one of those things, a five-year-old being on the screen, even a four-year-old, it, it's a long day. And so we're taking that into account and trying to figure out how we can do more. A lot of people wanted some, you know, more activities. I think we'll get there when we get to the hybrid, that they'll have more hands-on activities that the parents don't have to just sit with the child at the screen because that is a lot. But the feedback was very positive. Kudos to my staff because they're, they're the ones that are doing this, they're getting all the accolades, so.
Thank you. Mr. Quinn.
I'll, I'll echo a lot what Rob said. You know, those first two days, only having half the school in, you know, you, you get nervous when you say, okay, why are there only four kids getting on bus two? You know, and you're like, we're forgetting them, but we want, you know, because I think we had 137 bodies in the school one day and 120 the next. So you have this anticipation preparing for everything, but okay, you're only serving five lunches here and two lunches there. So it went as good as can be. I mean logistical things, we're tweaking, you know, you know, put the lunch wagon over here, it's going to be easier, kind of doing, doing things like that on the two orientation days. Dismissal, you know, we changed it from cohort A day to cohort B day and we got a little better plan than I think. It just went a little smoother the second day. So we'll, we'll clean all that up, you know, next week when we, when we go, when we do start hybrid. But I couldn't say enough about, you know, our health and safety monitors, their two days of, of, you know, sort of patrolling and being involved, they were, they were on point. The custodians, you know, getting in their routine for the high-touch areas went, went, went as good as it can be. And I, and I look forward to next week to, to get that sense of normalcy in the building. I mean, it's, it's, it's eerie when you've worked in schools your whole life and you're in school and there's no noise. And, and it's, it's, you know, everybody's like in their little studios this week, you know, and doing their thing. And, and so I think once we get some students back and, and we're, you know, do some synchronous teaching, it'll, you know, we still have a lot more to learn. But, you know, and again, same thing with Rob, a few emails, you know, most are positive, but again, some concerns about people struggling, you know, especially with their home, with two kids, three kids, trying to get it all done, three different workstations. And I get it, and I have been very honest with my folks at Barton. My, my 10-year-old called my wife at work one day sobbing because she got kicked out of a Spanish meeting and thought the world was collapsing around her. So it, it's, I get it, you know, as, as someone that, that has kids. So it, it's going great. I just, and Rob had mentioned tech, but I just wrote down amazing people, teachers, staff, tech department, and all our families because they are the ones, you know, doing it and, and just, you know, we're going to keep trying to get better. I'll answer any questions about the two orientation days, if you have any, but.
Questions?
Cleaning protocols, what are you guys doing for, I mean, most of your kids stay self-contained, so not really going anywhere, so you really don't have to worry about cleaning desks and stuff internally? Do they stay all in the same room?
Ours travel, the only time they would travel would go to gym class or art class. Everything else is right in the room. So, you know, the custodians did the sort of, this wasn't a Friday, but that Wednesday night, they did that extra.
Deep clean, yeah.
Deep clean, you know, for there. And obviously they kept the plan when we started Fridays, you know, they're, that, that kind of thing. But the, you know, they, they, Mr. Stone and Mr. Cheney during the day were, you know, had their clocks set, you know, squeezing, spraying the front doors, the handles, all those high-touch areas that, that we talked about, so. And the health and safety monitors were great.
Cover the bathrooms.
Doing the bathrooms, doing that kind of thing. So we think we got it, you know, and obviously after lunch where the kids went out, came in, washed hands, sanitized, you know, try to, that's the routine too, we have to get back in. You know, every time you leave the building, you come in, all those hand sanitizer, they're all up, you know, there's 36 of them there. There's one at the door, there's one in their classroom, so, you know, it's, and actually Dr. Nash was there on our first day when Mrs. Mayo was, you know, had the bucket, the big thing in her hand squirting, you know, come on, you know, and, you know, we did it. You know, I think a couple tried to sneak in, but we got them, so.
How many?
Just because again, the routine, I think once we get the routine, it, it should run.
How many health and safety monitors do you have in your building?
We have four.
Four? How many do you have?
Four.
You'll be receiving at the October meeting, the cleaning protocols booklet to look at. So that does have the checklist, but it also has the details as to the ins and outs of cleaning.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you, John.
Thank you guys, welcome.
Good job.
All right. And I see Ms. Bellham is coming forward, thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
So I'm not going to, I, I was really nervous for how this was going to go. We had no health and safety monitors when we started with the orientation days. Now we have all of them for next week. But the first two days went really, really well. The parts that I was most nervous about were getting the buses and the parent drop-offs in. I guess I could not visualize what half the population would look like for parent drop-off. When I saw the list of how many kids were going to be parent drop-off, I had a little panic attack because as everybody knows, it's, it's a puzzle out there at the middle school in the afternoon. But it went so well. Kids getting off the bus, kids coming in, we got them to their classes, the lunches went really well those two days, I was monitoring lunches. So we had a few tech problems to work through the first couple of days, but nothing major. Dismissal, like I said, went better than we anticipated, a little stressful staff-wise those first two days, but I anticipate that to get better. The staff and students and the parents did an amazing job. There was no issues, we had no issues with masks or following the rules or cleaning. The teachers took care of the cleaning in between classes, encouraged kids to wash their hands as much as possible, to use the hand sanitizer if they wanted to. It was really different than the spring and I was really impressed with the staff for stepping up to the plate and, and doing what they needed to do to make that work. I'm really looking forward to having kids back in the building though, like John, it's really weird not having anybody in the building. Yeah, so I mean, it's, the full remote classes are going really well, I've gotten a lot of positive feedback on that from parents, for our teachers that are handling that. Yeah, so I don't, I don't think it could have gone any smoother or better. I, I, I was pleasantly surprised by how well it went, so.
Questions?
Just a comment. Thank you for all of your communication because I think part of the reason that it went well is that your communication is thorough and effective and consistent, so thank you.
Thank you.
How many monitors are you?
Um, now we have four.
Four.
We had none the first two days, but now we have four going into next week. Yep, so that'll be helpful because it's very few bodies for me to yank in the building to help, but everybody.
You and Mike were doing a lot of it.
Mike and I did a lot.
They had to sit in the hallways and thank me.
We were very busy, so I don't mind the, the lunch part though, like monitoring the lunches is actually fun for me, I get to interact with the kids and do stuff, so I don't mind that stuff. But it was a little stressful making sure all areas were covered, to make sure students were distance and safe and monitored appropriately the first couple of days, but that'll be better next week, definitely with staff. So if we could do it without it, then it's going to be 10 times better with it, is the way I look at it, so.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Good job. Thank you. And we have Mr. Nugent and Mr. Truax coming up now from the high school.
Just to kind of echo what Amy had said, I think the staff and Bob and I were really, really nervous before cohort A came in. The students kind of showed us that, you know, they have been living it, you know, since March and they really understand. And they came prepared and they listened very well. I definitely want to thank the students on cohort A and cohort D, I want to thank the staff, the parents, I think, you know, student, the student drivers. First off, I want to thank StuCo again because I really think that second video really, you know, educated the kids a lot. So the student drivers knew exactly where to park, knew exactly what door to come in, what door to leave. The buses went very well. Again, I guess we were shocked at the, the dearth of students on the bus. And then the parent drop-off, we'd shift a little bit, that went very well. And throughout, I know, I mean, we have to remind students and adults the importance of masks. Couple of things we want to tweak are the mask breaks. We need to figure out a few things. NJROTC didn't have a chance to present to the ninth graders, so that, that enrollment is low, so we want to work on that. We do need to figure out school pictures still because it's important, not only for the IDs, but that's the crux of our yearbook. I don't want these seniors to go away without, without the yearbook. And Mr. Truax, we get, when we talked to the staff on the Friday after, you know, we're going to tweak the, the lunch schedule and delivery process a little bit. We have hired a new full-time custodian, Mr. Jose Santiago. He is, gave his last employer a two-week notice. His last employee is a school district, so he actually is coming fully trained with COVID cleaning. We have, which is good, although we, we lifted the stado, status, what is it, electro status?
Electro status.
Electro, you know, it's like 30 pounds without the fluid, so I'm hoping Mr. Santiago has strong legs. But I was here one night and they were coming through and I thought it was with Ghostbusters, but, so. Looking forward to sports on the 5th, you know, that's going to be a little transition as well. And once we finish finalizing the opt-out list, we'll know what students would be willing and able to help clean the desks with the teachers after each class. Again, maybe tweaking passing time and dismissal a little bit to get, get the buses out. We're probably going to steal the, the middle school model of, you know, when the buses are there calling out by numbers. And as they're going out that door, we'll have the walkers. The walkers are kind of getting into their cars late. But overall, I thought the bus drivers and monitors were incredible, making sure the kids were sitting where they were and sanitizing the hands when they're getting on the bus and getting off the bus. Again, we have some things that we need to tweak, we've identified them, especially around the importance of consistent mask wearing. And we're looking forward for the kids to come back. Anything I missed?
Questions?
Just one.
September, September.
I'm sorry. I just want to say that the positive comments that I've received regarding your response time on parent concerns, scheduling questions, et cetera, through your guidance department, or if they've gone directly to you guys, have all been very good. So I appreciate that. Good job, thanks.
No, just on that line, just to see how scheduling went, I know it's a absolutely daunting task on a normal year, never mind trying to create for hybrid and remote, so everything went pretty well?
It did, we, we had a plan, so guidance was set up in the auditorium for first two cohort days and students who, you know, and they triage, you know, students who had holes or were missing things, and so they worked on that. I worked with the remote students, and so right now I know guidance is working on, because they chose their classes back in January and February. So some kids were kind of altruistic and said, I can do 4AP, but now they kind of want to take one or two and go down, so we're on it. And then still rolling out and creating adenuity electives, but it's, we're looking pretty good.
Good, no, it's good to hear. Like I said, I know it's an incredible challenge regardless, it had to have been times 100, so good job.
Thank you.
Or good thoughts about.
And then if I can also add, remember that the students signed up for seven classes and that was the schedule until we changed that. And so, and students were in eight, so administrative team had to figure that out in addition to having a different day schedule, going to an alternating block, so everything changed in addition to the fact that it was a hybrid model, so it's almost the perfect storm.
And we thank you for your many late nights that observed, by different peoples, although they're still here. And they're trying to get that schedule out entirely fashion students. So as much.
I will say too that Mr. Truax was helpful, he talked with the track guys every day to make sure that if they weren't done, they were going to be out of the way for Wednesday and Thursday. But besides aligning, the track is all done and.
Oh, that's awesome, great news.
And so we're pretty excited about that.
Good.
And then DPW worked to fix the center of the field, so I'm going to thank them as well.
Thank you. Yes.
You spoke about mask breaks and that you're going to tweak the process. What are your thoughts, plans for tweaking?
Well, I, I think, so what we asked on that Friday was any concerns or suggestions to give to your department heads? You know, because we're also going to 85 minutes, they kind of want to, you know, look at where in the instructional time would, you know, would, would be best. So we have some teachers who are, you know, one, one student at a time, whether doing independent work and go hand, hand sanitize, take the mask off, be in the hall right outside the classroom for a little bit, come back in. We kind of just want to make sure that mask break doesn't mean that everyone in the class is taking it at the same time, you know, so we're trying to figure out the best way. And we want to identify for the teachers, which is kind of hard to do, so it's going to take a couple of days. You know, I want teachers to know if, if their kids are coming from gym that period, that they really should have, you know, a few mask breaks and stuff like that, so. Just, you know, and then teacher comfortability. Teachers might, some teachers don't feel comfortable with mask breaks, so we're working with them, okay? Like in English, if it's a silent sustained reading area, you know, they can do that and maybe you step out in the hallway and watch from the doorway. So you kind of want to work with the teachers and the kids to, to what makes sense and make sure everyone is comfortable, but, and everyone is more than, or six feet or more away from each other when they do that. I do have one more thank you. We did have 31 seniors, because I know that was a question at the open forum, we had 31 seniors come in on Wednesday to take the SATs. We spread them out in, you know, more than six feet apart in the gymnasium, so that was pretty good. We're going to focus on the juniors, I believe in October, and then the sophomores at a different time for the PSAT as well. I know there was concerns at that meeting, so we did allow seniors to come in and take the SAT, so that was a big.
Just another follow-up to one of your statements, you also talked about changing the lunch and schedule procedures, so what are your thoughts about changing those as well?
So I think we had gym first, I think it'd be easier for the teachers if gym ate in the last cohort, and that would give them time to, to clean up and get to the next class because they're teaching gym in the gym, but also health upstairs and we have the one-way and everything like that. We also didn't have, we don't have a lot of time in between, so we want to make sure the teachers get their full lunch period. So we're going to, you know, hopefully balance it out or, or spread it out a little bit where he'll be, Mr. Truax will be monitoring the cleanup, I'll be already in the other hall, making sure the teachers can go and get their full lunch period. But as far as the kids picking up after themselves, I think it was, they did a great job. We didn't have a lot of kids partake in the grab and go breakfast, but I'm thinking it was the first day of school, a lot of parents were making pancakes and eggs for the kids and stuff like that, so hopefully maybe, so.
This is more, I have questions for superintendent. Just to clarify, I guess the communication went out today and I received a few questions for that. If a student has opted for remote learning, can that student stay on remote learning? Even though the district is going full hybrid, are students still able to stay on remote learning?
Yes, we have students who are already, we have hybrid groups and we have a remote group.
Totally, okay, I just wanted to, I had a question, just for clarification on that, where, you know, so it's full hybrid, it's like.
Now, some parents may elect to move between the two groups eventually.
Right. Because, you know, there's a very, their child was doing very well in remote and just not disrupted, very good. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
He'll be here very soon, he just touched me.
That's okay, we, we will jump him. Mr. Ladoo, let's come up and hear your words of wisdom and financial literacy.
Thank you Chairman Coonan, members of the committee. My apologies to Kadian, I was going to jump in front of him until he arrives here. Just a quick update on bus monitors. Last we had met, I had recommended that committee reject the bids for the, that we had received for the bus monitors. I believe one came in from Durham, our transportation provider, roughly $32 an hour, a little steep. And then the other one, there was a pricing issue on the other staffing agency that contacted us. This has been put out to bid a second time, we put it out today. By law, we have to advertise for two weeks, so October 12th will be the bid opening date and we will have a recommendation for you on the 26th meeting. And again, I guess, to give you a little background information, any contract that exceeds $50,000, you need to go out to bid by, by Massachusetts state law, and you folks would be the one that, to award that contract. With 10 bus monitors, an estimate of $25 an hour, depending on the length of time, what requires to go out to bid. In the meantime, I have emailed our transportation provider and just said, listen, you know, can we, they had originally quoted us at $25 an hour, this was about two months ago. If we could just do a temporary contract, and that would be under the, under the $50,000 threshold, if we just did it for the month of October. So that's where I'm at with the process, just to get somebody in here temporarily for bus monitoring services. With that said, I do want to mention that the principals, they had mentioned that there was low ridership the first two orientation days. Some buses had zero, and I think the highest count we had was 11. And this is, with the DESI guidelines, you could fit 25 or so on a bus excluding siblings that sit together. So I just want to mention to the committee that we'd like to take another deep dive into transportation just to analyze it. When we come back, starting next week, because we're going to have to take a look, I mean, we might want to consider reducing the number of buses if the ridership is that low. However, I don't believe the first two orientation days is a true picture, so we'll want to give it a few weeks to see how it kind of plays out. But I did want to mention that because this does impact everything. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Could you just explain to me the bus contract then, how does that work? I thought we contract them to basically, we pay them a certain amount of money a year and then we kind of dictate where that goes? Or are you saying if we take a bus out of circulation, we're saving money?
In our contract, we have the flexibility to reduce the number of buses. So if you don't have the, the ridership or kids just aren't taking the bus, we can certainly decrease that number, we just can't exceed it budgetarily. Or even in the contract, the contract I believe says 10 buses, but we can certainly reduce that if, if we'd like.
So then do we get money back at the end of the year if that happens?
We simply just don't spend it. So yes, you would save it, it'd be a savings, that's roughly $70,000 a year per bus that you would save.
Okay.
Yes. I just wanted to say thank you for getting those monitors for the orientation days because I did see them on the buses and even though there were only two or five or 12 kids, I think it was super important. And going forward, I think Mrs. Griffin's point is that we, we can, you know, for the two weeks or whatever, they've had their orientation, which was really my goal at the last meeting, so thank you for that and hopefully they'll follow what they learned.
Great, thank you. I may or may not have slept that night, but we, we didn't have to call in volunteers, so.
And I'm not usually that adamant, so I apologize, but I just felt it was really important.
So, again, we hope to have a, just a temporary contract for at least the next couple of weeks to get us through, and then again, we'll reevaluate and go from there.
Could you just clarify, we hope, I thought you said we had one?
I have a, an offer to Durham, you know, certainly you're our current provider, it would make sense if you provide our, our monitors. I have yet to hear from them. However, with that bid, that we, we did get a staffing agency out of Connecticut that is willing to provide the staff as well, so my next step, if I do not hear from Durham in the next day or so, like, we'll look elsewhere.
Okay, so we don't have, as of we say. Okay. So we don't have, as we sit right now, we don't have anybody for the fifth, but you have a couple of leads?
Correct. Correct.
Okay. Because I thought I heard we had them, so that's why I was asking for the clarification.
And just I need clarification on that point. So if you go through a staffing agency, have these people have been cordoned and fingerprinted already?
They will have to be, as required.
They'll have to. So the odds are probably, they're not going to be ready for the first.
Excuse me, for the fifth?
Yeah. Probably not.
We'll see. Stay tuned. I will try my darndest to make it happen.
I know you will, and I'm saying, because there is the reality aspect of it.
Correct.
Because a lot of people, I mean, a lot of people don't want to work in the schools. You can't find subs. Yeah.
And that's part of the reason why we're contracting the service out versus hiring.
Mm-hmm. It's very hard to find. Yes, it's hard. Okay, any questions on that? Okay, capital request. Oh, I'm sorry, Pal.
That's okay. I was just wondering if there's any, you know, folks that are part of the school system that are interested in those positions? Has anybody reached out saying, yeah, buy the bus as a monitor? I know it's hard to do with the start of school and people needing to be in the building, but I imagine.
No, we have not reached out to our existing staff to see if they would want some additional hours.
Well, part of it is also too that some difficulty in the start and end time.
Right.
It just doesn't fit most people's work schedules. So that's been, because we thought about that initially when we were talking with you last time and asked you to reject both bids. Could we reach out potentially to get short-term? And Justin was able to work, you know, in effort with Durham. Hopefully Durham will be responsive. They've not been as responsive as we would typically want a bus company to be that's been servicing us for a number of years. So whether that's change in leadership or whether that's simply because bus companies have recognized that they have financial challenges. And typically, when that happens, tend to look, in our case, we share Durham with Worcester and a couple of communities. But the community that we really satellite off of is Worcester. And Worcester is not using buses at this time. They use a hundred-plus buses. So we really are a satellite. The reason that it can be cost-effective for a bus company is because they have their maintenance and their mainstay in Worcester. And so that presents a challenge to them. And in some ways, I think, trying to pass that on to us. So we're, we're working through that at this point. Justin is.
Could I just ask one follow-up or clarifying? So what is the contingency plan if we do not have anybody for the fifth? Are we preparing to potentially go on buses without monitors?
I don't, I don't think so. No, I think we, because we have two, two companies to go with. If I don't hear from one, I can go, certainly go with the other one who has been responsive. So that's the backup plan, go with the second company.
Right. But to the chair's point, like, that second company might, there might be some paperwork delay. I mean, we're four school days essentially away from this happening, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We can certainly have a contingency plan to the contingency.
Yeah. Well, I guess to Dr. Nash's point, but what is Durham told of if they're not really using any ridership in the city of Worcester right now, which is probably their biggest, not probably, is.
We've been questioning that.
Where's their staff? What are they doing with their staff? They can't, you know, because they're able to give us for two days, right?
Correct.
And they're not willing to extend right now? What is their, what is their reasoning to not extend?
I have not received a response.
Okay, they haven't responded.
Right. Yeah. I think we might anticipate what that would be, but we haven't received a response back from them. So we're hopeful, given the fact that they did, were able in a short-term time notice to find monitors for us for those two days, that they will continue to see the reason that they should continue to do that. They are a bus provider. It would make sense to do that. This is the last year of their contract. So.
We also paid them last year when.
We did do that, and I think we reminded them that that was something that school districts did in good faith. And so I would hope that they would also recognize that. We paid them last year for services that weren't rendered, as many districts did across the state. We're allowed to do that. We can't do that now. That has changed. You can't pay for something you don't get. But we did that, given the circumstances.
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
You're welcome.
Capital requests, we have a prioritization list?
Yeah. So as part of the last meeting, you folks did approve our capital items to move forward to our finance committee. They're all facility or building related. And we did say we would give you the opportunity to prioritize these requests. I'm not sure how you want to, how you want to do this. You kind of want to just maybe take turns and.
Okay, I'll open up to the, open up to the board. Obviously, right here is limited amounts of funds on some major projects. Okay? September, yeah, go ahead.
My priority, number one, obviously, is that boiler replacement. I don't think we had a choice on that because without that, we could potentially have real problems. My number two is a tie. I want Barton and Chafee to get those electronic door accesses for the safety of the students. Number three for me is the foundation repairs at both the schools. Number four is a tie with the flooring. And I don't know if one has a health and safety concern over the other, and then I would put that school as number four. Five would be the siding repairs, and the parking lot comes in last for me.
Anyone else want, something out there?
I think my list is almost exactly the same with just a question, Justin, but because I wasn't here when this was discussed, but the electronic door access for Barton and Chafee.
So this, this request is an estimate for twenty-five thousand dollars. Ballpark estimate is four thousand dollars per door to put a fob reader in. And the reason why this would be helpful or health and safety-related is you eliminate keys to people, staff members in particular, where they would no longer have a key, they'd have a fob. And the beauty of it is you don't return the key, we can just shut the fob off. Likewise, we can also restrict access to what times they can come and go, what doors they can open. Ballpark figure is about roughly five doors for twenty-five thousand. To do five doors at either elementary school. So typically, we do like the main door, maybe a door that staff comes in, maybe door near the gymnasium, just to give you an idea of what we'd be doing. And again, to eliminate the keys, we typically would only issue keys to maybe custodial staff or maintenance principal, somebody that really needs to get in. And then that kind of allows us to restrict access to other doors.
Yeah. So I guess the only thing I had swapped was the siding repairs and the electronic doors, only because my concern is if the siding repairs don't get done, it just leads to more problems, further issues and more money. But I think everything else I had pretty much in the same order.
Parking lot cracks first.
It's a joke.
Principals, come on. It's been a long month. You can't, Mr. Nugent, you're the king of jokes. You're not going to laugh at my joke? All right, boiler, boiler first, foundations, then the two floors, then the siding, then the two doorknob fobs and parking cracks. Parking lot cracks. Quiet audience tonight. Sorry. See if they're awake.
We couldn't see you laughing. Thought you were serious.
That's the point. Pal, do you have any?
No, I would just say parking lot cracks are last for me, and it's hard to rank everything else. I think that the electronic door access, that's kind of a, a main priority for me. And I kind of want to see the foundation repairs be moved up. I just feel like that's a horrible thing to just keep, let, you know, continuing to fester. It's really bad. Hate to spend money there, but it's really something that needs to get accomplished sooner than later. You know, and the boiler replacement as well is kind of a priority. I just wish we, you know, I know we're waiting to hear back from our MS. Help me.
The MSBA statement of interest. Let's see what the status is.
And I know we got a little update that they're looking at us and are going to give us some feedback at some point. But yeah, it would be nice to know if they were going to help us out there. But those things are a priority for me, too.
Thank you. Justin, realistically, about how deep can we go on this list?
If you want my opinion, siding repairs is quite costly. I'd probably put that towards the bottom, only because in reality, I just don't know if the town can fund that. I think that's more of an MSBA prog, problem. Do we?
Well, MSBA doesn't look at siding repairs. It's not on their list for renovations. So I think my question would be, have you had someone come in? Have we actually spent twenty-five thousand to have someone come in and do an assessment of both schools to determine how much potential damage you have and water that may have come in? And what's the longevity of that? I mean, that may be something that we first look at and put forward to the town before we determine that it's going to cost. Did we get that cost from an assessment, or was it really?
This cost I received from the facilities department. They did bring in an engineer to evaluate. It was part of the report.
Okay, so they did bring in an engineer.
Correct. That's as far as we've gone with the study on it. And it looks terrible.
Right.
That's it. Obviously, we walk up, we say, geez, there's a problem here. We call in engineer. They, they looked at, they did an analysis and said, there's issues with it. You got to replace it. And that's all we have is the study at this point. So the ballpark figure that I was provided was four hundred thousand to replace, I believe it's Hardy Board on both the elementary schools. Again, back to what I was saying, I think with the limited availability of funds, four hundred thousand is just a lot for, for one request. And, you know, when you have these other ones, it's almost like you're better off to maybe get a couple smaller ones than versus this one big one. I hate to say it, as they're all equally important. But I would probably move that down towards the bottom. I don't want to speak for the committee, but I, if I hear what you're saying, the parking lot crack fill is pretty low on the list. Again, I would move the siding repairs and obviously the boiler foundations and the door access seem to be the more important items. The one thing that kind of came, I'll say the, it's a little bit more urgent, is the flooring replacement. And that's because you have carpet in the elementary schools. So that presents a problem in itself. But now with the eating in classrooms, that, that made us really start to expedite this and say, geez, we need to get on this sooner than later. So I don't really have any advice to the committee on that one, because that one kind of came, came pretty quickly. It's just the urgency is just, you know, due to COVID and what we're now dealing with.
Okay, just give me a second. I'm trying to, everything we have here.
Mr. Chair, if I could just ask a question. Did the engineering study indicate the life expectancy? Do you recall on the, on the siding repairs? Did they say how many more years we might have?
I don't believe so, but I can certainly get you a copy of that first thing in the morning. I don't recall our life expectancy.
Okay.
I'm kind of really concerned about the whole siding repairs. I think it needs to be a priority. I just think of the old Woodward School and the hole in the roof and the mold that happened in that school and how there were problems before problems before the big hole in the roof. And I think we're starting down the same trajectory. And I'm really concerned that if we don't make this a priority for this town, they won't make it a priority for us. So I, I know there's all these other little things that we need, but at the same time, if the building's crumbling, we're getting mold and water issues and damage in our building, then none of this other stuff's going to matter later. So that's kind of a big priority for me, is getting that accomplished.
Justin, is it possible for us to see the facilities department report?
Absolutely. I can send it out first thing in the morning.
I think that's really, to Pal's point, before we can make a decision, can we wait another year on this? You know, where does everything go? How do you fit the pieces of the puzzle in if that's an unknown? And the boiler is gone. So I think Mr. Canaglio said that, that's already money spent on the boiler.
Excuse me, let me just give you an update on the boiler. So you have three boilers over at middle school. Two years ago, we had one replaced because it just simply did not work at all. It was dead. You can typically heat that building on one boiler. However, on real cold days, when it starts to get, say, twenties, you need two. You really need two for it to be effective. So the problem is when you only run it with two boilers, if one of those boilers goes down, when it gets to February and it's in the twenties.
It's so serious.
So we did push that forward about two years ago. To get approved, that boiler has been replaced. So currently, all three boilers are working. And just when that had happened, we reached out to the manufacturer and said, geez, you know, we had purchased this in two thousand and seven. It's not, it's not too old. Boilers should last longer than this. And they said, no, the life expectancy is ten years on that. So this is brought forward now because we've been told by the manufacturer that the life expectancy is ten years. So it's one of those things where we should probably have some type of funding in place in case one were to go down. Does that mean we're going to have to shut down the school if one goes down? No, but it will be a, if one goes down, we're going to have to do something. I know it's a little, lot of information.
Yeah, that's a lot. Okay. And it does really change, I think, my thinking of it because you're talking about three. If one, if all three are presently working, that does move it down my priority list. I believe it is a priority. And if one, and if one does go, I mean, sometimes they are repairable as well, too.
Justin, have we ever been without two boilers when it's been cold? Have we ever had the issue in the middle school where we've been without?
I was just going to say, too, the boilers might be working harder this year because we're going to have the windows open, right? So we're going to be heating and cooling at the same time. So they might be working harder. So I agree with you, Dan, completely. That moves it down on the priority list for me as well. But food for thought, they're going to be working a little bit harder, all three of them.
It could be, yes, potentially. And then, and then, you know, and then for this year and now, you throw the wild card out there, and I got to say, it's the elephant in the room. When you, when it comes to prime flu season, you might be getting sent home again. I mean, if you look at Worcester's red and the numbers are still going up in Worcester, and it's going to start trickling out. It may start. There was a report, New York's, New York emergency rooms are almost at capacity right now. So the science is not, it's not going away. And we're getting into cold and flu season. So there's a potential that the students may be home as well, too. So, okay. We've got a decision to make. And you needed this like last month, right?
So the town charter says that we submit it for September first. I'll be honest, no department has made that deadline as, so I did speak with the finance director. She said, get it to us by October fifteenth, so the finance committee can take a look at it. So we do have till October fifteenth. The issue is, I don't think you folks are meeting again until after that.
It'll be the twenty-sixth, I think. I don't think we're ready for it tonight. And again, we're just, just based upon this, we're on our next scheduled meeting and just finalization reports. With all due respect to the finance committee, we understand that, but we're just not ready to.
So could I ask a question, though, just on that point? And again, I think we all have to, you know, think out of the box, look creative. What kind of money did we save on the custodial supplies from March to June and, you know, with some of the supplies we've been getting through, like the CARES Act and different things? Has there been any savings there that, you know, if the boiler did go, that we could shave some of that money towards this replacement? So I'm saying is if this goes lower on the list and doesn't make it, and, you know, the two are functioning, but we do have an issue, is there some money in there? I can't imagine we used all the supplies from March to June. So our fall ordering savings has to have been pretty significant. I'm talking toilet paper, I'm talking cleaning supplies, all that stuff that you do bulk order at the beginning of the year, we probably saved. Keep quiet. You tell me, did we save money? I guess is the question.
Yes, there, there was some leftover from last year. However, supplies for that fiscal year typically belong in that fiscal year. So it would have been, anything that should have been purchased for last year should have been purchased for last year. So it's not like we can roll that money forward and put it aside.
But money that was earmarked for this year might not necessarily have to be used.
No, I understand what you're saying. The first place I would go is probably to a revolving fund if we had to pick up like a ninety thousand dollar purchase. Currently, we have two items on the table that we're going to look at was the partitions at the middle school for twenty-five grand. And then the countertops at the elementary schools that we're getting quotes on now was roughly forty thousand dollars. I believe you had about a hundred thousand dollars in that fund. So that would leave you with, I don't think it would be enough to do, you can't do all projects. That, that's the point. So we'd have to probably prioritize. Just kind of thinking aloud, when I'm looking at the partitions at the middle school, I don't foresee a chance this year unless we shut down to even have that done. As we're going to have to take out the old ones, paint, fill holes, do As we're gonna have to take out the old ones, paint, fill holes, do all that, clean, put the new ones in. It's not gonna be done over just a simple break, we'd probably have to wait till next year. So, with that said, if that's off the table, the twenty-five thousand for this year for that project, uh, we, we could probably make it work. Maybe, depending on when these, how much these countertops come in at, um, could we fit it out of our current funds? Maybe, maybe. And that's if we just pulled this off the table and said, you know what? Uh, what kind of roll the dice, see what happens. If, if we need it, cool, we have the money. If not.
But also remember too, we took a major hit on the curriculum. Well, we purchased the curriculum from, from money from last year.
That was, uh, through two things. There was, the curriculum was part of capital, I believe it was a hundred and ten thousand was part of it. Then there was additional, um, supplies that we had ordered as part of that. I wanna say the, the grant.
Twenty-six, so we, we, the hundred and twenty was capital, then another twenty-six for a total of one forty-six for Envision's math. But that was a piece of capital.
So, that additional twenty-six thousand that we needed came out of our operational budget.
Right.
Right in the beginning of the year this year.
Justin, what about breakage in our salary lines? I know there were some positions we haven't filled, nor do we intend to fill. One in particular was the substantially separate sped position at middle school.
Correct.
And then what about, um, any retirements and new hires? You know, the breakage that we might have had, the savings in someone who's retired at this end. And, and I think the central office position that we didn't fill when we reorganized.
Yep.
I, I know that there's been adjustments though, you know, obviously with people coming in, new hires.
With the breakage right now?
The additional custodians that we were funding, um, the four additional custodians, and we haven't hired all of them yet. But, so we still haven't hired, I think, three of the four.
We have a lot of vacant positions right now, uh, that there's potential savings there.
So, there could be some potential.
You have fifty thousand just in your breakage right now. And then, and you, there's still a position that was not filled, that's substantially separate, that's probably sixty or seventy grand right there.
Does the town of Oxford run an emergency fund and facilities for any emergencies in any town building? Um, such as, you know, unplanned emergency? Cause a lot of towns run an emergency fund, they keep it for something like a boiler that they need that happens in a, in a building or something other catastrophic thing.
Yes, the town does have that. However, my understanding is, uh, it goes pretty quick. There's a lot of deferred maintenance all around town. I mean, notably, uh, the library has had some major issues recently, if you see the, the work that's going on there. Um, so I believe that's actually a town meeting article to appropriate more towards an emergency fund to kind of fix some of these things.
They do have a separate fund.
Correct.
Do we have any idea how much of a balance is in, in that fund typically?
I don't know off the top of my head. It's usually earmarked for certain projects.
So, it's not really an emergency repair?
It's not really an emergency, but if we had to, it doesn't tie your hands like capital does. So, when you approve capital at town meeting, the capital says it's for the specific item, period, you can't be used for another item. Whereas the building improvement fund, you sometimes hear at town meeting, um, you have the flexibility if there's an emergency that with, it's, it's not tied to that one item, you can use it for something else. However, it is earmarked for certain things, but the town would reevaluate that and certainly use it for something else if, if something like catastrophic happened.
All right, thank you. Anything else on this? Before we go, actually, we're gonna go right into budget. Budgets this year, and we'll finish here up.
So, lastly, just, just to get some clarification on the capital items.
Yeah.
Would you like me to submit to finance committee as is with no prioritization? Um, would you like to just choose maybe one or three items and still submit everything and say, well, geez, these are our top priorities? Everything else, we'll let you guys decide. Um, and again, this is also contingent upon how much free cash is left from the end of last year, because there's only so much to go around. Would you like me to wait until the committee has time to?
But I'd like to say, Stu, is obviously the finance committee looks for a prioritized list. And so, we should prioritize the list, but I just wanna give all the information with the, like, we heard the time with the boiler. Just, if you could get to us, if it needs facilities, just, instead of just the line item, a little description of what this would involve. So, so we can have a little more background information, like, oh, okay, this is what the foundation looks like. What's the estimated time, or how much damage is already in there? Is that really a priority? So, um.
I can provide more information to the committee.
Yeah, please.
That's fine.
Just, I mean, I, I think, I think on everyone's list, the driveway is probably the, the last one.
Got it.
That's, that's pretty, so, 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 so we, so we accomplished one eighth of our goal.
Okay, that's fine, I could provide more information. Um, I believe it is a joint meeting between both, uh, finance committee and school committee anyway. So, we will probably meet that evening, even though we wanna wait till then to give them a true priority.
However, yeah, but, yeah, just as long as we're, we're prepared.
Okay.
And that we have, that we, everything's all lined up, and I don't wanna put you at the eleventh hour, but.
Okay.
But I just wanna make sure this committee is fully prepared to, to address needs of, of where the school is. The school is really, if it's that bad, it'd be crumbling, well, that's gonna go number one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The final item I have for this evening is the budget to actual, uh, through the end of August, two thousand and twenty. With that said, there isn't too, too much activity over the summer, uh, with the exception of, um, we talked about the math curriculum. I don't believe in this, we've actually paid the bill yet, uh, so you won't see that reflected. So, my apologies, but there's not too, too much to say, as like, like I said, we haven't had staff back through August. Uh, the first payroll didn't come until September. Um, I will just mention a couple of quick items, uh, substitutes. I'm a little concerned about the, the funding in substitutes, just because we don't know what's gonna happen. I, I don't know if, uh, what the, what it's gonna look like when, when we return. Now, I know, obviously, with, with the hybrid, um, reduced students, however, the, the teachers still need to come in. Just putting it out there, I'm just concerned, cause I've seen a lot of things going on in other districts, uh, with respect to, to substitutes. Um, so we might have to come back to that. The, another item is electricity, I believe is overfunded, so that could be one source to pay for additional substitutes this year. I just wanted to put that out there, but we'll have more information as the year goes on. And just a few other items that you're not gonna see as part of the operational budget, but as you see the, the track, so we'll, uh, the track will be paid for probably, uh, next couple of weeks after the, the painting's finished. Um, another item that's outside of your operational budget is the flooring at Chafee. Uh, I believe we did pay that invoice just a few weeks ago. Um, there's a few things like that, that I just wanted to bring to the committee's attention. Lot, big ticket items that you're not necessarily gonna see in this, uh, budget. I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any questions about this.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
And just going through and, um, I'm just looking at different things coming up, different ways, ways of saving, like, I know right now, a lot of conferences probably will not be going on this year. And then I see a line in here, it's on page, uh, eight of seventeen.
Yes.
Seventeen thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars. Educational conferences, professional development. Is that for people coming in or people going out? It's an awful big number. And we haven't used any of it yet. I mean, you have educational conferences, school leadership, you can't, sixty hundred dollars, that's probably not gonna happen. So, you start looking at these conferences pieces. Uh, the guidance thirteen hundred, that's, you know, again, not gonna happen.
For your lane changes mid-year, the seventeen eight?
No, no, so that's part of the administrative budget.
Educational conferences, professional development, seventeen thousand.
So, is that contractual?
No, and to be honest with you, I, I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to look at the, the budget and see what the detail is, what, what's putting this number together. My guess is it's something to do with NIASC, uh, accreditation expenses.
Is that under the high school?
Under the high school, correct.
And that's what it is. They were scheduled to come June, actually, you're gonna hear me tell you that that's now been moved. So, that's probably the cost for NIASC.
So, it's freed up about twenty thousand dollars.
It, it's somewhere, it's gonna be less than that because they've changed, I think, Dave, the format, if I remember. So, well, we used to estimate around twenty thousand for a hotel for approximately eleven to twelve people. They're not sending eleven to twelve people. Uh, you're, actually, in your packet, I think, this evening is the fact that NIASC has, uh, been moved to next fall. So, you'll hear me say that there'll be a, probably a reduced number that will have to be in the FY twenty-two budget under the high school for that. But I'm assuming that's, that's what that, uh, line item is.
So, if you're looking, if you're looking towards reallocation, like I said, just with, I don't think conferences and maybe, at this stage, it's probably not, not prudent to send people out to conferences again. That's to the, that's, that's building administration and superintendent, but I think we can pick up twenty thousand out, twenty thousand pretty quick.
Got it.
Just my, you know, my, just my perusing, just reading my packet and reading and looking at numbers, like, oh, we're gonna, yeah. Okay, that's something just food for thought. All right, anyone else? All right, thank you. Anything else we still do?
Thank you.
Thanks, Justin.
Okay, thank you. And next, I'm gonna go to, uh, Mr. Phillips, please. Such a departmental update on, and before you, before you did walk in, accolades all around. I mean, people are really, there's very few, if any, complaints with technologies working, technologies running. And, 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 and you're running a million miles trying to get it done.
So, if he looks a little harried today, I might just start before, uh, Mr. Phillips does. All of this has been happening with one point five staff members. So, uh, one of those things that when you're doing planning and foresight, you always miss something. And quite frankly, what I missed was the fact that we needed to add, uh, a technology assistant for this year. Uh, short money, somewhere between eighteen to twenty thousand. And so, I have asked the, the chair if, uh, he would let us go forward, um, to do that. Uh, and if you had seen Kadian last week, I think the entire administrative team would tell you, he's never harried, he's never frazzled. He, he never gets too over the top. Uh, he was definitely over the top. And so, when I asked him, what do you need? Uh, he, he needs another support staff for this year.
Totally understandable.
We, we have that, um, in our breakage in our salary, I mean, we anticipate. So, it's short money for what we need for this year. So, hopefully, it will be another, Mr. Reynolds. Uh, and, uh, we'll be able to, um, free Kadian up to do more of really the, um, kind of, I call it the teaching piece. Because Kadian brings something that a lot of technology directors don't bring to the table as a former building administrator. And oftentimes, you get someone who knows this end of it, but doesn't know that end. And, um, our staff have worked extremely well. Uh, I'm really appreciative, um, as you are, of his work. It's amazing what he's been able to do.
You know, and, and start to really start, start talking about budget for next year. If you look at the groundwork that's been set, and, and Kadian's been, Kadian has been on it since the forefront, um, just for the grants. We, we did the, um, the debt exclusion. We just, just to start with the, the one-on-one, it started with bringing your own device, and, and he's like, this is how we can do it, this is how it's gonna get done. And he's built this whole platform, which puts us miles ahead of, of the districts. They were the first ones to get this, but where, but now where we went, where we exposed so many to it, and how we get back to some sort of normalcy. People are gonna be expect that their child goes home with the Chromebook. This is now the new thing, so, and, 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 you know, I know you said short money, but I think that's gonna be something, that's gonna be a long-term part of that budget. And, 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 and he's honest, and Kadian will evaluate it, cause I, I've never known him to come and ask for something that he's already trying to do it twice over, which I was really surprised when he's like, I'm sure Dr. Nash, I'll get you some help.
Believe me, he thinks it's his money when I say, can I get a printer? Can I get a printer, please? I don't wanna print to Alan.
He is a store for the people, yes. But, but I think that's something that, that, in the long term, as you see, because your, your department went from, okay, yeah, yeah, there's a guy that passes out the Chromebooks, no one knows who he is, to like, this is a guru that's making this whole thing work from every single building on. Is, and it's gonna be expected, the expectation is gonna be there again. So, if you didn't really start looking at your department and how it's gonna grow after this.
Correct, correct, thank you. Yeah, well, thank, well, that's it. No, thank, uh, thank you for the kind words, for sure. Uh, it has been a pretty busy couple of months, as you can imagine, with, uh, with the technology department. As I mentioned, every time I come up here, we're, we, we're a small department, you know, um, and we basically touch everything in the district for the most part. Um, you know, nothing runs without, um, our department, cause everything's now internet-based or, uh, running through some technology. So, even, uh, the door, the thing that facilities will take care of this, for this, uh, school department, we get called because they're like, hey, it has a wire attached to it, so you guys must be in charge of it, you know? So, um, so we're, we've done well with the staff we've had. Um, and, you know, going into the spring, as, uh, Mr. Cooney said, we were relatively well-prepared with a number of devices we had in hand. And because we're building up our fleet over time, like, whenever we had any money, I know I'm a little, uh, you know, we try to find the money in the budget. And whenever, as, as things freed up, we get more devices in, because we kinda saw that's where the direction things are moving. So, um, so we were one-to-one with high school, kids are bringing those devices home. And then the middle school and Barton, we were working towards one-to-one with carts in the buildings. And we, and literally, I think, a week or two right before everything happened, we'd just finished up, finished, finished setting up six more carts that were going back out in the classroom, so that when NCAS rolled around, we could have every kid take the test at the same time. So, we're not worried about scheduling things around, um, you know, having the, the tests extend over a month, we could do it, you know, in, um, four days. So, so this has all been kinda coming together over time, um, with whatever funds we have available. Um, in the spring, when things happened, we kinda changed directions and broke down every single cart and started giving devices to the kids. So, every family who needed a device.
Take a breath.
Yeah.
Take a breath, take a, take a breath, yeah, take a breath, you're all.
Yeah, no, no, so every, 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 every family who needed a device, uh, over the spring got one, you know? So, uh, it was, it was great because we had them in-house, so we, we, we could get that out to them. Uh, then, moving into the, the fall, the plan was to go one-to-one. Um, where every parent or every, every student would get a device. So, we, uh, we went through, tried to get, you know, the funding for that. That's where the, we had a grant that came through to purchase those additional Chromebooks that we're gonna send out to the families. But unfortunately, as most people know, you can't find a Chromebook anywhere right now. You know, it's just been, uh, everything's backordered. So, we've had, we've had orders in with multiple vendors for the past couple of months. Um, we're starting to see that some are starting to get them in, so hopefully, we'll get some in in the next couple of days, maybe, or a couple of weeks at the most. At this time, uh, we do have every parent or every family who's requested, um, a device, or every, for every student has one in hand. Um, so, the, the direction we went was we'd sent out a survey to the parents when we knew that we weren't gonna have enough devices for every single student, K through seven. Uh, so, uh, right now, we're one-to-one, eighth through twelfth, and every student in K through seven has a device at home if they requested one. Uh, so, so we're, again, we're in great shape there. We, um, just because we don't have the time, as the devices come in, so the schools have been very, very helpful too, where they're kinda the ones were helping with the distribution, because we can't be, we, we don't have a spot to sit there for all day to be taking things in and out. Um, so they've kinda been going into the offices, dropping off the device, and we've kinda just been replacing them with, you know, um, hopefully, a device that works. And we, we just don't have time to go through and check every single device to, you know, make sure that every single thing is cleaned up. Uh, so we get a couple of those where, you know, things are broken, because some of the, some of the machines we have are going on fi- over five years. So, so, to, to your point too, Mr. Cooney, we do need to start thinking about, uh, upgrading our fleet. Uh, because the, that first wave were, is, were, were the ones the high school kids used when they were in, um, eighth grade. And those are the ones that are starting to come back to us now. And we try to recycle and, you know, use parts to, to, um, to put, put it together. But, of course, you, um, after five years of, of jostling around in the bags, uh, you know, they're, they're gonna get broken. So, so plan moving forward, definitely to keep upgrading that, um, that fleet to make sure we have enough on hand. Um, and, and I think we are gonna stay one-to-one. Um, it, it may look different in the other buildings, um, where we may, at some point, we may be able to go back to the cart model. Where, you know, where, where the cart stays in, in the room, depending on, depending on, we, we'll, we'll, we'll figure that out when we get there. But at this point, where we're expected to be working, uh, or students are expected to be working at home and in the buildings, then, uh, doing one-to-one, it just makes, makes sense where they have their own devices and move forward with. We did, um, order cases with all the devices too. Uh, so whenever we give them out, we're giving them out with cases, because, you know, starting next week, when we, when we go to hybrid, they are gonna be expected in most buildings to be going back and forth. So, just to, you know, just, just to help with the, you know, having it not get as, get as damaged going, going forward. Even the internet, so, I, I, you know, we were, again, it's just thinking through and what we need. So, one preparation we, we had done last year, we, we upgraded our internet from three hundred megs to, to, two gigabytes. So, almost a sixfold increase, not, this is not, but this is before, uh, any of this happened. And I, I don't think if we'd done that upgrade, we'd be able to have video meetings going on throughout the day. So, uh, so these are all things that have put us in a good place, um, moving forward. Um, you know, we'll continue to, again, to assess the, the fleet, make sure that it's, it's, and then, you know, try and figure out how do we put in our budget to make it sustainable moving forward? Uh, because, you're right, every, moving, the kids are gonna want these devices. Because you're right, every, moving, the kids are gonna want these devices. It's gonna be the, the new expectation that you're, we're gonna be having a device that you're gonna be using throughout. And it's great how they're, they've become pretty comfortable at, at it, you know. And, and even, there's a simple thing, um, like typing in the MCAS. Like, now you, before, the kids would be, like, the elementary students at Chafee, they would have a, a little station in their room, you know, with a couple of computers we'd set up. But they'd go to the library probably once a day. But now, they're, they're on those devices pecking away, um, all day now, you know. So, I, I think that those skills that we've, that may not be integrated in our curriculum, now the kids are developing them, uh, that will only help them as they move forward. So, um, we're, I, I think we're, we're getting there, where, you know, it was a, was a little crazy there for the, for the last couple of weeks. And more than anything else, it, it was, we, we had to go through every room, uh, because teachers were prepping for what remote learning was gonna look like. And they wanted support there. And, um, and that, that, as Dr. Nash said, that, that's what I found fun to go into the classroom with the teachers and talk through, what's your, what's your class gonna look like? And where, you know, where do you wanna position your camera? And, uh, you know, how are you gonna view the kids while, while you're teaching for remote learning? Or when you have the hybrid kids in front of you and you go to remote learning. So, those were all the conversations we had with departments and, and with, um, with teachers. Are, are also just, uh, the interactive projectors that we, that we had, you know, it may not have been getting as much use in terms of using the interactive pieces, because it wasn't necessary, really. But, uh, but now, if you use that interactive piece, whatever you write on that board, now it shows up at that, on, on that kid's screen at home, as opposed to using a whiteboard and trying to use a, a, a camera to pick that up. So, just those little skills that, that the teachers have now, um, picked up and, and now, they're, they're finding value in, in doing that. So, um, so I think, again, that's, that's just helping us moving forward, again, where, where the, the, they're, they're seeing that return on investment in terms of wanting to use the technology that, that's there, that's there in, in the rooms. So, we're getting there. Uh, I think an extra staff member will definitely be, be helpful. You know, with, now with close to 2,000 devices out there, 2,000 Chromebooks, that, that's where, that's where we're gonna be when we get one-to-one, because it's, it's one-to-one for the, the students, but also the teachers. Because we wanted teachers to also be versed in using the device, so they can help the students when, when they have trouble. So, um, so we, having that extra support will definitely be helpful. Thanking everyone, teachers, staff, uh, parents for the patience throughout, because as I said, we're, we're a small team. You know, they continue to send requests to techsupport@oxbs.org. That's kinda been how we've been handling everything. And now, we're really getting more parents emailing us. And, and, and most of the stuff is, my Chromebook doesn't work, the camera doesn't work. And again, the quick answer is, for any parent, if you have any problem, you, uh, the easiest way is to go to the schools and we'll just replace that device. And we'll just keep cycling, you know, until we get a good one. Um, and then, uh, we have a backup right now of, uh, you know, a couple that, um, will, will go through, see what, what the problem is when things slow down a little bit, and, and hopefully, get those back out. But moving forward, getting that budget set, because we're gonna have to replace that pretty soon. So, thank you.
Thank you, Katie.
So, a quick question for you. First of all, great job. I appreciate everything you've done, the cases that you have. I had a kindergartner with me, adorable and so perfect. Nothing will happen to those Chromebooks. My question is regarding the insurance. And I know that we used to charge that in the high school, $30 a year. And we didn't do that with the COVID situation. But I know that was also part of your reserve funds, if you will, to purchase new Chromebooks. Are we gonna be going back to that, or?
Yeah, 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 we will. So, um, so we'll push that out probably starting next week. At this point, it wasn't necessary, because, because they're all remote right now. But as the kids start coming in back and forth, I'm hoping to push that out by next week. And we'll probably do something online where they can pay online. So, Nick, Nick could set something up where we can basically pay online. So, we'll give that option to the parents.
Great, thank you.
Katie, great job. I know what that's like, and it's not easy. Looking forward, and this might be a question, too, for elementary principals. As the kids come back in the building, I'm assuming we have some online assessments that we'll be doing with them. And knowing that we've given Chromebooks to certain students, and they're gonna bring them in, do we have enough Chromebooks for those other students to take the assessments? Because we can't share those Chromebooks now like we used to, right?
Yeah, we, we do, right now, we do. We do have, so if, if, um, if a billing wanted, say, you know, 50 devices for a day, we, we can do that right now. I'd say, on hand, we probably have about 100 devices now. But we still wanna keep some for, well, as the devices are broken, keeps coming in, we'll cycle those through. And we also have those, you know, a couple of those that are broken right now that we have to go through and repair. Um, so, yes, we'll, we can handle, we can handle that.
Awesome.
Katie, how many do we have on order?
Right now, we have on order, um, 220. Um, but hopefully, and, but we'll probably end up getting more, especially with the grant.
With the grant line.
Because, and again, it, that will help when we replace those five-year-old devices. Then those five-year-old devices can then become more loners, as opposed to being a constant day-to-day.
So, the 64,000 or so that we received.
Yeah, one thing, but you go, um, you know, Katie and I, I work with you, you're amazing, and I, and you go above and beyond. I would ask that when you bring a budget to us this year, please build in the budget of need that you need and build in the capacity to keep it sustaining. And I've heard you use that word. And I'm hoping when we vote in this position, that we also keep that as a sustaining position. I, I, I hope it's just not a one-time. I want that to be, you know, sustaining as well. So, yeah, bring us a budget that's gonna build you the capacity so that you can have a, a replacement within your budget. So, we don't, I mean, it's great to have that side money, too, potentially, but really look to bring us a budget that's gonna meet, meet the needs of what you know we need. And then you let us try to figure out a way how we get that to you. Okay?
And, and I think it's changed a little bit, too, because the, the last couple of years, we've kinda been building up, right? And now, we're at that point where we're almost at, at the point we need to be. But now, it's, it's now backfilling, yeah, from the other.
Right, because you're at this pandemic.
Expectancy of the ones you got five years ago.
Right, right.
Yeah.
So, one thing, my, like, heart goes out to you, hearing that you've gone into all these classrooms and assisted teachers and taken your time to give them their support that they needed to get up and running, because that is just, I imagine it's something that doesn't happen everywhere. So, for you to go and do all that, like, God bless you. And I'm sure that your teachers love you for that, and I love you for that, because I know that that's what's made them so successful this year. I'm thinking about how this district lacks technology integration specialists in every building. And it's a common thing that's in every district at this point. It's just really kinda the main stain, like, it's the expectation. So, you can worry about kinda all the behind-the-scenes networking, fixing, doing what you gotta do. I know you'll still go into classrooms, because that's like where your heart is, too. But I think you need more support than somebody that's only coming in.
You may see that in the FY22.
I, I hope we do. Like, that would be one thing that I'd really push for, because we know where we're going. I mean, the writing's on the wall. And, um, our teachers, they're amazing, and they're doing all this stuff pretty much on their own and teaching themselves. I'm sure above and beyond outside of what we do here for PD. But I feel like every building just needs that. You know, somebody needs to be able to pick up the phone. And if you're in five different places, you know, sometimes I'm sure they have to wait a little bit.
And just to add to that, to it also, I wanna thank the, the teacher leaders in the buildings, too, because they, they're, some of them take on the responsibility of that, right?
Right.
On, on top of what they're doing. Because, you know, they go out and learn the different platforms, or how to set things up. And then they help their teams throughout. Um, so, so that's been a, a huge part of, of the success in the buildings, too.
Katie, do we have any teachers that are Google certified?
Yeah, I think we have one. I'm certified, and we have, and then we have, I know one teacher who was, I think, level one or two certified.
You know, because later, what, what the committee can talk about, too, if there's an increased need on buildings, is that we could also look at, look at stipend positions. If people are certi, are certified, and again, assume it comes from your department, and the principals, to get to a different, to a required level.
One thing, too, I, I, I'm hoping it never happens, like, this again, really, because, uh, you know, we, we still were working on the fly. You know, even, even as much as we did all the planning throughout the summer, uh, it, it didn't, it wasn't gonna be true until the teachers came in and they had to figure out what they wanna do in their rooms. You know, so I, I think that's, that's when things really got, um, hey, now, now we have to do this. Now, now let's figure out how we're gonna get it done. So, um, so hopefully, now that we have, you know, a good, a good base, um, I think hopefully, moving forward, we'll, you know, it won't be as crazy.
Excellent. I'll entertain a motion to fund the, fund the position of a technology assistant.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, um, discussion.
Yeah, just as long as this is a sustainable position, uh, I, I definitely wanna see it sustained, if not increased. So, let's say, we'll put that out publicly. I know I said it earlier, but we've got all the motions on the table.
Alright, thank you. Roll call vote, Mrs. Forbes.
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin.
Yes.
Mr. Burke.
Yes.
Mr. Knackill.
Yes.
I have a yes as well, vowing affirmative. Thank you for coming with that request and all that you've done.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciated.
One last question before you go.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Sorry. Back in the day, we had network switches and all that stuff. I don't know if that still exists, things like that. Is there anything that we kinda have to worry about, potentially, like a boiler, but for technology?
Good question. So, we, we did get approved last year for capital requests to replace, uh, switches. So, we have about $40,000, um, that we'll be using to do, like, core switching in the backend. So, yes, so we'll take care of that. It's just been, uh, that, that'll happen later in the year, when, when everything's off and running. But, um, we, yeah. So, I think we're, we're in good shape. So, when we did that capital, what was that, like, four or five years ago? We went and replaced all the switches in the, in most of the, um, the secondary closets, we'll say. But then the main switches, um, we have funding to replace those now. So, we'll be doing that this year.
Because I know that's a pro huge wrench thing, so I'm happy to hear. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Dr. Nash.
Sure, thanks. The committee, I think, uh, heard me speak about the, uh, change in NEAS. And so, you'll see reflected in the FY22, two budget, uh, that, the need to, uh, fund that for the fall of 2021. We'll get a better handle, maybe, in talking. Dave probably can have a conversation with, uh, one of the associate commissioners in NEAS to get a sense of the change in costs, uh, which will probably be reflected by their new model that they've introduced. Plus, um, given where we are in COVID, whether or not that continues. And it could end up being a remote visit, so. The next item that you have in your packet, uh, is the information from the NAEP and a reference to Oxford High School. So, annually, uh, the, the country has the closest, uh, uh, nation has the closest to what we call a national assessment of educational progress, and that, or NAP, as we call it. It's, it is an assessment that is conducted in grades four and eight in math and reading. And annually, mandated by law, uh, districts across the United States are asked to participate. Either, usually, it's a building or two within a district. So, fortunate to be selected this, um, year to participate in that window of time, uh, end of January to somewhere in March, is grade eight at Oxford High School. So, I provide you with this information. Uh, it is a requirement. There will be new procedures in place. Uh, and we provided you with some of that information with respect to COVID. You will see our students in grade eight participating in a math and reading assessment. In addition to that, there are some student questionnaires, typically, that they respond to. Oftentimes, that's in hard copy, but this year, it could potentially be an online, uh, survey of questions that is ahead of the test. Materials and equipment are all provided by, uh, NAEP and the personnel that they, um, send out. You, again, have that information as to the date, the window of time, uh, that will be notified, uh, is between January 25th and March 19th. As we get closer to that, Mr. Nugent will receive notification from our representative or the state coordinator, uh, who will tell you when that assessment is going to take place. Generally, it's probably the same period of time for Massachusetts. Um, and, uh, that's it on, on that information. I don't know if you have any questions on it?
Sure. Dr. Nash, can parents, I hear from parents all the time, my kids are overtested, my kids are overtested. Can parents opt their child out?
No, no.
No. It's an easy one, guy.
Did they change that? I did it three, I did it three years ago.
Yeah, there's never been an opt-out, to my knowledge, because it is linked to federal funding. So, I, so I think that, that's probably the reason, um, you know. I've, I've never seen it, Mr. C.
Yeah, I thought we did, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, yeah.
Dr. Nash, um, are you able to tell us a little bit about what the student questionnaires?
You know, I have, no, I was thinking about that. I haven't, um, sat in on that for years, or been part of the administrative team for years to see that. But it's, so I really can't tell you. The short answer is I, I can't. You know, it is based on the expectations, I would say, and across most school districts and states with respect to state standards around performance in reading. Generally, you know, it's passages that students read, it's comprehension, uh, as far as, uh, grade eight goes. And mathematics would be typically based on the standards. I'm sure there are some algebra, geometry questions on it. But it is one that is used to try to, you know, rank us compared to other countries, because that's the closest we get in our country to a national assessment. Whereas some countries require all students participate in a national assessment and get a true profile. We get kind of a snapshot across the country of that. But I really, you know, don't recall. Years ago, I remember, uh, seeing it, but I haven't recently, so.
I do, I do remember. It's not gonna be the whole grade. They only pick, like, a couple of classes, or they randomly select names. So, it would not be the whole grade. It's only a.
You're right. You are right.
Small numbers.
Yeah, it's usually not, you know, they need to have a certain percentage across the country. And they need to have a certain percentage in your state. So, it generally may not be your entire, um, class. It may be two or three class, classes, if you will, so.
I guess my question was, um, in the letter that you provided us, it says, in addition to subject area questions, student, students complete NAP survey questions.
Yep.
What other information are they asking the students are looking for? Do we know?
Uh, some of it's background information, um, if I recall. It's not necessarily.
It's voluntary, too.
Yeah.
That piece is voluntary?
Yeah. And it's background information to get a profile of student demographics, primarily.
Thank you. That is up, Dr. Nash, please.
Okay, alright.
The whole show until they come in.
Okay. The next, uh, next information, um, the next, uh, item that you have in your packet is, um, the metrics for consideration for switching to hybrid on October 5th. So, I provided you with, um, some information, first of all, on the, uh, August 11th memo that went out from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education that provided, uh, guidance for school districts on interpreting the weekly dashboard data, if you will, that the Massachusetts Department of Public Health publishes weekly, where it color codes, um, the metrics regarding communities and ratings as to their cases, average daily cases per 100,000 over a two-week period, um, that they then color code. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education then took those metrics and equated them to, uh, what they would call DESI expectations for learning models. Red, meaning the metric, if you were a district, a community, excuse me, or a town or a city that was color-coded by the Department of Public Health of, and as red, then you should be, uh, their expectation in remote. If you are yellow, hybrid or remote. Uh, if extenuating circumstances, if you are green or unshaded, then the expectation would be full in person or hybrid, again, if extenuating circumstances. And those circumstances certainly consist of looking at current guidelines, understanding how a committee may have voted with respect to distance, three feet as opposed to six, looking at, uh, transportation cost, looking at how you, uh, continue to provide time on learning. And those are other metrics that you're looking at. So, I provided you with a summary of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health COVID-19 information for Oxford for the weeks of September 2nd, 9th, 16th, and 23rd. So, that's four weeks. The, uh, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education asks that school districts look at, uh, continuous weeks and don't particularly look at one week as an indicator of making a decision whether to move, uh, from remote to hybrid, or from hybrid to remote. So, in looking at these, uh, statistics, you can see that the, uh, metrics for Oxford indicates that in two of our cycles, 916 and 923, during that four-week, uh, reporting period, we, uh, saw a decline. And then there was a week on 99 where we saw a bit of an up. So I provided you with a summary of the Massachusetts Department of Public Health COVID-nineteen information for Oxford for the weeks of September second, ninth, sixteen, and twenty-three. So that's four weeks. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education asks that school districts look at continuous weeks and don't particularly look at one week as an indicator of making a decision whether to move from remote to hybrid, or from hybrid to remote. So in looking at these statistics, you can see that the metrics for Oxford indicates that in two of our cycles, nine sixteen and nine twenty-three, during that four-week reporting period, we saw a decline. And then there was a week on nine-nine where we saw a bit of an uptick in the change in percent of those who tested positive with six individuals. If you look at the average daily incident rate in the last fourteen days, column that I've put in orange, but I think yours might be black and white or shaded, you see that on nine-two, we had two-point-six percent average daily incident rate over the last fourteen days. It went up a little in nine-nine to three-point-one, went back down on nine-sixteen to one-point-oh, and then back down to zero this most recent last week. So we certainly saw a decline over the last two weeks moving lower. Overall, however, when you look at the total positive test in the community, you can see that on nine-nine, the most that we had was six. So we're not looking at a large number when it comes to the actual number of positive cases over a two-week period. Also, when you are looking at the positivity rates and thinking of the considerations of moving from one model to another, you have to think of some of the other factors in making decisions. Some of these we've already planned for, because we had the opportunity to start our year for two days in hybrid. And when we talk about the design of physical space, if one were to not have been in hybrid, we would have not had planned for our physical space. If the committee had not voted for six feet, we would have looked differently at our physical space. But we have done a lot of this work and addressed the cohort grouping, we've addressed the physical space. So we're not in a system where we haven't done that in moving between the models and having to make a decision from point zero, from scratch. We certainly have had a number of meetings with our town side to talk about our facilities and our HVAC systems, had those conversations with our union leadership to ensure that they understood the functioning of our systems and how they operate. And in fact, as Katie had talked about, actually had contact, because some of ours are all done remotely, and Katie had to do some troubleshooting for them to make sure that they could continue to get into the system. We also have put in place our cleaning and disinfection plan, and on the twenty-sixth, you'll receive the booklet that describes that, and it also outlines that checklist of procedures for us. So because of that, we, those considerations are not major at this time, unless we saw that when we had done the two days of hybrid, we ran into some large issues that would have made us pause and stop, but they didn't, and you heard the principals, I think, talk about that. But another consideration that you have to look at is what's going on in districts who may have opened in hybrid or in full in person. And as I indicate, the data about that is rather anecdotal at this time and pretty sparse. It is primarily the second week for districts. We have seen some indications of what has happened in some of the communities with respect to events or parties outside of the school, particularly at the high school level, and how that may have engendered something. I think most recently, there was a local incident in Auburn with respect to one of the monitors on the bus, but there really isn't a lot that I have seen on my list serve, or have read, or saw in the newspaper regarding that. So it wasn't data that I would readily have available at this time. I do think, however, as time goes on, we're going to see that. Just a matter of time. But to me, another important factor to consider is where your employees live, because your employees are coming into you to work, and some of them obviously live, could live in communities that are high risk. So to that end, we ran a spreadsheet and did some research on where do our, most of our staff live. So I provided you with that information, and I wanted to share that, because I think it's significant as the health metrics about the town is the health metrics of our employees. Where are they coming from? Are they coming from high-risk areas? So you'll see that of the total percentage of staff who work for us, and we have around three-hundred-and-twenty, thirty-six-point-five percent are Oxford residents. So I provided for you the ratings for the three weeks, the most recent weeks, and you can see that one time we had the uptick, but we have been in the unshaded or gray area for the last two weeks. The next number, largest number of percentage of staff and where they live, tied between Dudley and Webster. They each represent six percent, or twenty individuals who work for us live there, and you can see that those communities have been in the unshaded for the last three weeks. Charlton has fifteen of our employees who live there, again, representing four-point-six percent in the unshaded zone for the last three weeks. Worcester represents about four-point-three percent, nothing that we probably didn't know about, that represents fourteen of our employees, and they have gone from yellow to red. Certainly, if that was a significant number, if we were looking at one-hundred-and-seventeen of our employees, then we might give pause to think that that may be something that we would want to consider as a influence or a factor. And then our, our next town on the list was Spencer, representing twelve individuals, so three-point-seven percent. So that accounts for almost two-hundred of our employees, representing about sixty-one percent. And overall, you can see that the majority of those towns represent an unshaded, except for Worcester. The rest of the towns, just out of curiosity, went back to look, are under, the only towns that are five or six are Sturbridge with six, and Sutton with six, and then Douglas and Wittensville, each five. Everything else making up the difference is under five. So, so I think looking at that is critical data. Do they live in a red or a, or a yellow community? We can't control what people do on the weekends or where they live. We can't keep everybody in a bubble like the NBA, and therefore, I think that's significant, as significant as looking at the, as the metrics in your town. So based on that, and I, at this point in time, and barring no significant uptick in the data that will be coming out on the thirtieth, this Wednesday, I will say to you that I'm recommending that we move into the next phase of our reopening plan on October fifth, which would be hybrid. Now, again, for those students and families who elected hybrid, for those who have elected remote, they will continue in remote. I just wanted to make that clear, so that people don't think that everybody is coming to hybrid. We will continue for those students on remote learning, and unless we have some major uptick on Wednesday, Wednesday afternoon, I would be informing parents on Thursday definitively to plan. I have preliminarily informed them today to be thinking about it, kind of, and the school committee would be considering it this evening, so that at least parents could start thinking, because I know that a lot of us have been talking about this October fifth date. So that's where I am, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Nash. And this all goes back to the hours and hours of planning and forecasting, and I can remember, Dr. Nash, as said words, I am not sending a child back into the school, so I think that it's in a safer environment. And we see the protocols that are happening, and what else too, is if you choose, choose online learning, nothing changes. So this is really following the schedule and protocol that we've talked about quite a bit. But I will open up for discussion, and then I'll, then I'll ask for a vote to endorse or plan.
I would just like to say, Dr. Nash, I appreciate this nice packet. It answers a lot of questions. You've hit on everything that was on my mind when I read that preliminary email. And again, I thank you for all of the work that you've put into a thoughtful decision concerning the health and safety of our students. So thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion that on Monday, October fifth, the Oxford Public Schools will move to a hybrid model for those students and families who elected this learning model for students on remote learning. Nothing changes.
I'll make that motion.
A second, I'll.
Point of clarification, do we need to put the October one review by her in the motion, or would we be okay without having it in?
Um, the superintendent always has every right to pull it back, but the recommendation, the school committee will vote on that. And then what may be is if that case did happen, Dr. Nash would have to call me and say, this is what, her and I would have to make that decision, because we're not posting.
Okay.
Yes, we, yes, there is a, there is a fallback. It's not, you're not stuck in the mud. Yeah, there is a fallback with that. Okay, very great question. Any other questions? Discussion. Got a motion and a second? Good. Mrs. Forbes, roll call vote.
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Canocchio?
Yes.
Mr. Coonan goes yes as well, five in affirmative. Hybrid has started, and again, with no change if you chose remote learning.
If I might just make one final comment, I just would like to offer my thanks to this administrative team. I think we went way back, starting, I can't even remember back when we were all over our heads and thinking about which way was this all going to go. And I can't tell you the endless amount of hours that they've put in, but more importantly, anything that I've asked, and I've thrown a lot of things at them, not a single person balked at that. Your entire administrative team, including assistant principals, who certainly are not paid, and I know we appreciate and they appreciate your additional gratitude in recognizing that, but they have been, from day one, at every single meeting, whether we started online, or whether we were meeting in person until, until last week, when it was really the last meeting. But I just want to thank them publicly, and it goes without saying. Certainly, our parents have been extremely responsive, but I think it's partly due to the leadership that these individuals have shown over this time period. They've been direct when they needed to be. They've been compassionate when they needed to be, both with parents and with their own staff, and they've gone beyond knowing the difficulties that are lay out there, lie out there in uncharted waters, and knowing how anxious everybody is. So I just want to thank them publicly, every single one of them, and certainly recognize, and that goes without saying, that our parents and our staff, our staff have been incredible throughout this, so.
I want to give you guys a standing.
Yeah. Never did I think I'd be walking into this. But it has been made so much easier by working with this administrative team and how they have responded, and I mean that sincerely. I have, with all stakeholders, but especially on a day-to-day basis, when I'm working with them, they have been extremely responsive, and I've always known their capability, but I think it really has shown over these last few months, and I want you all to recognize that. So thank you all. From me. And that's it, Mr. Chair, from me.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent, Dr. Superintendent, Dr. Nash. Pal, you'll be.
This evening, September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty, a payroll warrant was signed on September seventeenth, twenty twenty, for five-hundred-thirty-eight thousand, eight-hundred-thirty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. Another payroll warrant was signed September eighteenth, twenty twenty, for three-thousand-one-hundred-eighty-four dollars and ninety-two cents. An accounts payable warrant was signed September twenty-second, twenty twenty, for two-hundred-seventy-three thousand, nine-hundred-one dollars and seventy, I'm sorry, and forty-seven cents. And then tomorrow, I will be signing an accounts payable warrant dated September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, for eighty-nine thousand, four-hundred-fifty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Okay, Mrs. Griffin, do you continue on the floor on your requests?
I have no requests this evening, and many thanks to all for everything that they're doing.
Mrs. Forbes.
I do have one request or question that's been brought to my attention from a couple of families regarding the free lunch pickup time. It's been very difficult for families with young children to either leave their students home alone or to pull them off their remote. So one parent had suggested maybe a pickup time between eight and eight forty-five, or the possibility of picking up more than one meal, or more than one day's meal, at a pickup time. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention. I told somebody I would do that for her this evening. I appreciate the consideration. I do have a couple of other things. I have been, through my job, my other job, I've been polling parents and students, and I just want to say again, echoing the appreciation that we've all shown tonight, that the parents have been pleasantly surprised, and I hate to say that, but that's the true statements many have used in the difference of our remote learning this year. And I have had amazing statements from both students and parents, as young as second grade, right through seniors in high school, just asking questions. Do they feel their orientation prepared them well? Do they know the how, the where, and the why, and the when to be where they need to be? And everybody felt really confident, and the remote learning feedback that I've been getting has been totally incredible. We've, we're way ahead of what I've been hearing from people that I know who live and work in other districts. The kindergarten kit that they sent out was unbelievable, unbelievable. I had the pleasure of being with a kindergartner on day one, and that little plastic bin that they, they had everything they needed. And I am going to shout out to Mrs. Boudreau, who did an amazing job keeping a five-year-old entertained and learning all day long. She had nice visuals for turn your mic on. They don't even know what that means, and she'd have a little picture of the mic with the circle and the line through it, and then showed the little picture of what they actually needed to hit which button. I mean, it was incredible. And then Mrs. Boudreau, the kindergarten music teacher, she, she was unbelievable. It went by so fast. It was entertaining. It was educational. I was so impressed with that. And I don't have a kindergartner, so I was really happy that I was able to do that. The brain breaks were physical. There was some glitches, but I know that's been worked out as well, and that was really just about the videos themselves. I did have a question for clarification. I was under the impression that sports was starting on October fourteenth, but then Dave had mentioned October fifth, so.
Practice, I think it's October fifth. Yep.
It is the fifth? Okay, thank you. And I think that we've been really fortunate with the teachers and the administrators over other districts, because every district is not having the same positive successes, and it comes from the top down. So again, Dr. Nash, I thank you. And, oh, one suggestion that somebody had, is putting reminder alarms on either Alexa or cell phones for your students to stay on track if you can't be at home with them seems to be working well for a number of families. And that is all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Forbes. Mr. Burke?
September covered it all. I'm good. Thanks.
I think we go last, yeah. I can say they covered it all.
No, it makes it easy, but, no, to echo a lot of it, I mean, kudos to all the parents, the, the guardians, the teachers and staff, the students. I mean, I, I think I said it multiple times up here, we have one chance to make remote learning look different in the spring, and, you know, I think by listening to what Mrs. Forbes said, and, you know, in my district and other districts, it's, we, we're all doing it, and it, and it's taking the whole continuum of who I just talked about there to make it happen. So great job to everybody. I know Dr. Nash sent out all those well wishes to all of you, and very, very well deserved, but, you know, we are still, I say this multiple times up here, very thankful to have her sitting in that seat to help us through this. I know that's certainly not what she signed up for, but she's done an amazing job steering us in a, in a really good direction to get us to the next phase of this hybrid model. Let's hope we can maintain that for quite a while and hopefully reintegrate full at some point. But thank you for your efforts and all, you know, and to Helen and all your staff up at Central Office, who behind the scenes, I know do a lot as well, so thank you all.
Thank you. Kind of on that same note, it's a great segue, is that there is a reality that the rainbow, the end of the rainbow is coming. Dr. Nash and I talked this week, and, and we kind of like started, she said, well, what do you think? I said, well, first of all, this is your bus, and you're still driving it. You're not going anywhere right now, and I would not feel comfortable entering a search right now, because you're probably not going to get a really good candidate at this point in the year. And she, and again, Dr. Nash, the professional that she is, and this is how, probably most advantageous for, for us to go about looking for a replacement, is that we'll talk about it a little bit in October. So at our next October meeting, we'll, we'll discuss it a lot further, and then we'll probably have a posting somewhere, oh, in January or so. And so, which gives us time towards the end of the year, because ideally, if you're hiring a candidate, by the time that they leave their district, it may be a July one start. Who knows if they're going to get out early for that, but it gives us that whole springtime to do a very thorough background search, to really, and if we don't get the first candidate ready, or if we don't get it, we can repost, is that we want to make.
ready, or if we don't get it, we can repost, is that we want to make sure that Dr. Nash has got this district back, and we want to, we want to keep that momentum moving forward. So kind of where we are with that, we'll be putting together search committees, we'll be have, and we'll have, we'll be looking at different models, how we're going to do this, but that's coming up. So if anyone's wondering, and people at home are wondering, hey, what's going on? Interim superintendent, she's going to be interning, give her the job, what's going to go on? Is eventually Dr. Nash doesn't want to.
I'm heading back to retirement.
She wants to head back to retirement soon, and I'm sure, and I'm sure her phone will ring.
10,000 miles on it for the last three years. It's getting tired.
And I think after a year, your phone may ring again, and hopefully not from Oxford, but someone else is going to say, we, look what you did, Oxford, we need some help here.
No.
But it is, and I thank, and we, and we kid each other on the phone about this, like, yeah, she didn't sign up for this, but we got, we got an effort and a half. We really did, to just the stage that, to put it together with all the principles, to coordinate so many moving parts. And when I saw that day, October 2, I think, there's no way, there's no way she didn't have everything ready. It's ready. And so I think Justin has a couple little loose ends to clean up on the busing, and then this is really a positive move on the district side. So that's all I have. I will open up the floor, public comment. Anyone? Nothing? I will close the floor. Again, our next meeting will be Monday, October 26th. Any topics, please get up to myself or Helen, and we could add to that agenda. That is our only meeting for the month of October, and then I believe in November, I think we just have one meeting as well.
We have two.
Oh, do we have two? Do we have two? We are meeting that Monday of.
Yeah, December, I think, is one.
If we're meeting the Monday of, oh, yeah, we're meeting the Monday of Thanksgiving week, let's try, let's take, what I'm saying as a chair, that's historically a very busy week. If we can, if we can not, if we can post for emergency purposes only on that, if we can fit it in, but saying that, no one wants three, four-hour meetings either. So if we have to come in for, to come in to get things done, set a schedule of 9 o'clock at night, 10 o'clock at night, that's really counterproductive, but just.
So typically, Mr. Chair, on the 26th, I'll be looking, believe it or not, for a direction from the school committee with respect to budget for FY '22. So your directive as to the type of budget or budgets you would like us to be thinking about, so if you want to start thinking about that, just as an FYI.
Thank you.
Right? You'll be getting probably the timeline then also, or at least the projected timeline from me.
Yeah, it's budget season already.
It is. Oh, yeah.
All righty. Any further business? Entertainer motion adjourned.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that motion.
All's in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you, I'll be back.